And ask that you join us in the pledge. And Ms. McConnell, if you would leave it in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item up is to consider an act upon the minutes of the regular meeting of August 17th. May I have a motion to accept?
I'd like to make an amendment.
Get it in front of us?
Yes, I'll make a motion.
On a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion or amendments?
Yes, I thought that we should add a few things to the discussion on the update from the Parks and Rec Department. So I will get together with the secretary to discuss those.
Just to clarify, those were things that were discussed?
Things that we discussed at the meeting.
That you want to see reflected in the minutes?
Correct.
Perfect, perfect. So if that's the case, you're going to get with our secretary in between?
Yep.
Then, would you like to make a motion that we postpone considering these minutes till the date certain being the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any public comment? Looking back, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, thank you. So we'll take that up at our next meeting. Next up, we have some special recognition for the Fairfield American Little League. We could invite them in.
You're going to come right around here.
Consider this wall, first baseline. We'd like you to line up along the first baseline. Well, it's not as long as the real first baseline. All right, way to go. All right, we thank you for coming here today, and we want to let you know how proud our town is of everything you did and how you represented our town. I'd like to invite one of the coaches up to speak at the podium and give us a little bit of background on your season and comments.
All right, well, the boys had a great summer. They started out really well. Winning District Two was always very difficult. The Trumble teams are great, Westport's very good, so a lot of good teams. So we were thrilled just to get out of District Two. Then they went on and they beat Stanford in the sectionals and kept going on. And winning the whole state, I think will give them memories forever. And then we got to the regionals, and Rhode Island was very tough. And they went on, they went down to Westport, won a game down there, and they were a really strong team. But I think the most important thing to me was, the boys were great, they played well, they won. But from the best kids to the kids that maybe weren't as good, they were all great kids. A lot of character. We had disappointing end to the season, and they were disappointed, but they didn't turn on each other, they were supporting each other the whole time, and they were just great kids. We had a really fun summer with them, so we appreciate that.
Okay, we've got a few presentations, but before we do that, I'd like to turn to the floor to my colleagues and see if you have any comments to add.
No, just congratulations on the job, guys. It's fun watching the games.
I'd like to say to the coach, there's nothing disappointed about winning the state of Connecticut and getting to the championship game with the New England's. I know how hard you guys work. I was once a Fairfield All-Star way back when, and now I'm actually coaching my own kid, son, who's in the seven-year-old program. So I know how many years you guys have been at it, and to cap off your Little League career with a state championship is very commendable. Right now in Fairfield, I think we're building a machine which the rest of the country is probably looking at with great respect and admiration, and you guys are part of it. So congratulations to you. Don't feel disappointed. Feel engaged and get ready to move on to the next level of your career. I appreciate how well you represented the town of Fairfield, and thank you, thank you.
Building on my colleagues' comments here, I'd like to point out two things. One, it is a tremendous opportunity that the Little League has given our kids, specifically because, as I understand it, it's five out of the last seven years you've won a state championship. And that speaks to a program, not just a good team. And that's a tremendous compliment to all the coaches and the culture that you've built, but importantly, the opportunity that you afford our children in doing that. So I want to thank you. Second, guys, I wasn't able to get up to Bristol. I did watch you at the Colony Grill. And two things I want to point out. One, it was just amazing sitting there with the other fans, watching you go through that and watching the excitement and how well you handled yourselves. And that's very impressive because it speaks to who you are from a character standpoint. My one complaint was that, in my role as First Selectman, I try and keep the town updated. So I was trying to Twitter and tweet out, "You guys score too many runs." I couldn't keep up with that. I mean, I just not, the thumbs don't work that way, guys. But it's, I can't tell you how proud you made everybody in the room that day, but everybody in town. And I just want to thank you for the gift you've given us in terms of letting us all participate in your journey this summer. Now, we do have some certificates, but I also know the state delegation is here, and I see three of them. I did get a call from Representative Kristin McCarthy-Weighi giving her regrets in that she wasn't able to attend today's meeting to help with that. But who is from the state delegation?
We'll all come up quickly.
Okay. Go right ahead. I was going to ask you what, I don't know what you have, so why don't you take it over and show us what you have, and then we'll take it from there.
Key to the city?
No, we couldn't get them to extend school vacation for another week.
And I think, for me, quickly, I just wanted to add the fact that I want to acknowledge the parents and the support network and the coaches that gave these kids the opportunity to enjoy a chance of a lifetime. And ultimately, to all of you as kids, bless you, is that you have all represented Fairfield so well. To be on national TV, to represent what you demonstrated, sportsmanship and teamwork and caring about each other, is something that the town is very grateful, and so I'm grateful as a representative of that. And then third, I think, as I was mingling with you guys outside, I see you are forming friendships that are going to last a lifetime. And that's really what Little League and sport teaches you, is the fact that you support each other and you develop friendships that will last a lifetime. And that is what truly Little League and sports teaches you, that you have people who care deeply for you, but at the same time, that you have personal responsibility, and at the same time, you have people who care about you that make you so much better. So I'm thrilled to be here for you guys, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So it is an honor for me to be here to recognize you guys. Congratulations to you, to all of the parents and your families and to the coaches. You were the talk of the town, you are the pride of our town. It was really, really exciting. And I totally echo what Selectman Tim Niack said, "Don't feel bad." I'm sure there was an element of disappointment, but you have accomplished greatness, so be really proud of that.
And I'll just cap off by saying I'm also very proud of you, and I joined our First Selectmen and our Selectman Tim Niack at Colony Grill rooting you on, and we were all cheering and eating pizza, and you guys were really awesome. And again, don't feel bad. You guys won the state championship, and you also made Fairfield, once again, very proud of you. So, awesome job, guys. And I won't take up too much time, I'll just leave these here for the coaches to hand out to each of you, but they are official state citations congratulating you for an awesome job.
Do you guys want to hand these out?
What do you think?
Let's go with it. All right. What we're going to do is, we've got one of these from the town for each of you, so try and get it out front. Let's try and do this. We're going to call you out in front of the table, just to complicate this. So we're going to call you out one at a time. Scott Sterner. Is Scott here? Brian Greedy. Richie Kurtzetter. You're bigger in real life. Yep, Matt Longo. Guys, just again, congratulations and thank you for how proud you made us. Hey, guys, let's get on this side of the table so we can get a team picture here. If I can invite our state reps back up too, also, please. Guys, we may need some of you to take a knee.
I like the color shoes.
I'm getting them back.
You guys are too big. All of you take a knee.
You might need to do that.
Oh, see?
Just make sure you can see out.
Can you see out?
Who is taking a knee?
Want these two to stand?
Ben, these friends?
They're very tall.
Ben, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Awesome, you ready? Look here, look here. On three, loud and proud. One, two, three. Awesome. Congratulations, everyone.
They're so tall, they're 12.
Some teams are here in the short team, and the thing is, I would kneel down, but it'd take me a minute to get back up.
Thank you.
Congratulations, I'm pretty kind of far now.
I love to play together.
They've already had their first ball practice.
Good job, guys.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Hopefully we'll see you soon.
Yes.
I like it in the candy.
Okay, if I could call the meeting back to order? Brenda? If I could ask your help? If you could just let them know that the door's open, we can hear them, if they could move away from the door, that would be good?
Close the door.
Thank you. All right, while there's a break in the action, I want one quick moment here to announce that we will be conducting the 13th Annual Employee and Fairfield of the Year Awards. Any member of the public, including town and school employees, is encouraged to submit nominations by 12:00 PM on Monday, November 7, 2016. Nomination criteria lists of previous winners and nomination forms can be found at fairfieldct.org/bosawards, B-O-S-A-W-A-R-D-S, B-O-S awards, or by contacting the First Selectmen's office at 203-256-3030. Please note that nominations can be submitted online. The Board of Selectmen will present these awards at one of our meetings in December to two outstanding individuals. The winner's names will be added to plaques which list names of all previous winners and the year they received the award. The plaque hangs in the entryway of Independence Hall. So thank you very much. Okay, on to the agenda. Next item up, item number six, First Selectmen appointments. These are for information only. A, a citation hearing officer, William M. Burke, 245 Unqua Road. The appointment date is August 25, 2016. And B, parking violation hearing officer, William M. Burke, 245 Unqua Road, also an appointment date of August 25, 2016. Mr. Burke, I think you're here. Did you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, we thank you for serving the town and thank you for stepping up to representative in this. We hope there won't be too many appeals, so you won't be too busy as we go through your term. Next up, the Clean Energy Task Force, to hear a report from the Clean Energy Task Force on the electric vehicle showcase being held during National Drive Electric Week. Mr. Thompson, are you ready to give us your report?
I am, and I have a copy of our flyer for you to take a look at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me here today. This is our second, and we hope to continue it, so our second annual electric vehicle showcase in Fairfield. It's an opportunity for our community to see all the choices of electric cars that are out on the market. A lot of people don't know much about electric cars. It's hard to get the word out, but there are currently 35 models that are out there to choose from. There's SUVs, there's cars in every price range, so there's choices for everyone, and we're trying to raise awareness within the community because it's a great way to save money on your transportation habits and go green in the process. We have done some great things this year. We've added food vendors to the event, so last year, everyone was baking out in the sun with nothing to drink. So this year, we have, the Buzz Truck is going to have coffee and all kinds of other refreshments. We're going to have Be Good, who's going to cook up some burgers for us and offer salads. And we'll have an ice cream vendor there, too, so it'll be fun for the whole family. Last year, we had about 50 electric cars, and about 150 people attended. This year, we've done a lot more outreach and promotion, so we think it'll be an even bigger event. And, you know, the big thing that we saw last year, everyone was really excited about the electric bikes, and those were buzzing around the parking lot. And actually, this year, we've kind of taken safety measures to make sure that they have now a dedicated lane to ride in so that they're not crisscrossing the parking lot with everyone walking around. But those are a lot of fun, so if you do nothing else, make sure you try out an electric bike. Let me also, it's not just the Clean Energy Task Force, I want to acknowledge the Fairfield Earth Day Committee and Mary Hoag and Peter Kraus and the other volunteers that have helped pull that together. So we worked collaboratively to try to make this event a success on Saturday. So, yes, the date is Saturday, September 10. It's going to be held at the Fair Preen Lot, which is on Mill Plain Road, so the auxiliary or overflow commuter lot at the train station, right across from the Sportsplex, and it's going to go from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the board?
Sounds good. I think it's smart to bring in the food trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
I swung by last year, it was pretty cool. I hope that I have time to get there tomorrow. I know it's the first day of fall ball, we just heard from the Little League, so I think our game's at 11 o'clock, and it might be tough for me to get there this year.
Okay.
But I encourage you to go, who's watching at home, if you haven't been yet, it's pretty cool.
Yeah, last year, we had a BMW i8 with the doors open parked right out on the road, and that drew a lot of people that didn't even know about it. This year, we're going to do the same thing. We have a Tesla Model X, which is the new Tesla SUV, and it's got the Falcon wing doors that open up like this, and so you will see it if you drive down Mill Plain Road on Saturday.
Yeah, I was amazed with the sheer number of different styles of cars that are now available in EV mode, if you will. And as I mentioned, last year, I drove an EV way back in the early 80s, and it was big and heavy and slow, and the styles today are so much better, it's come multiple generations since then, and it's actually fun to drive an EV these days.
A lot of fun, 35 different choices. We already have, I think, a dozen different models registered to attend, and about 25 people have registered, but more people just come, you don't have to register. If you own an EV, you're welcome to attend, and just show up with your electric car. So we'll see a lot of that, too, so hopefully, we're lucky, it's a big parking lot.
And so you kind of work on both ends of this. How many EV charging stations now do we have around town?
The town currently owns 10, and we're working on installing two more at Ward High School and two more at Ludlow High School, so that'll bring it up to 14. And there's about another half dozen around town that are not town-owned, but that are available to the public as well.
Okay, very good.
So about 20 total.
Wow, wow, it's getting up there. All right, very good. Any further questions?
No.
Scott, thank you very much for coming here to present to us, and look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Okay, very good, and thank you all for your support, and hopefully we'll see some of you as well. Thanks.
Bye for now. All right, next up is our item postponed from August 3, 2016, which is to review and approve the register of voters' salaries. We have in your packet, I think, the backup material from last time, as well as an additional handout and write-up from our HR Director, Emmett Hibson. Have you all had a chance to meet him?
Yes.
Since we had a chance to review some of this last time, what I thought we might do is invite Mr. Hibson up here to talk to us about his letter and what it says and what it covers and what it doesn't cover, if that's okay with you all.
That's good.
Mr. Hibson?
Sir.
If you would come to the podium and fill us in.
Good afternoon, Emmett Hibson. I'm the Director of Human Resources for the town of Fairfield. So I was given a copy of the package that was submitted by the Rayshar voters at your last meeting, asked to review it, and I was asked to provide some comments to the packet. One of the things that I didn't think was my purview was what was reasonable compensation because the statute pretty much says it's your purview, but some of the things that were in, some of the comments that were made in the original packet regarding FLSA and the Affordable Care Act, I felt was important that you at least hear to the law on those issues. So, question as to whether someone is an employee, kind of has, there's no one set answer for that. So for certain laws, you could be an employee, and for other laws, you could be excluded from an employee, and what you have elected officials is pretty much in that category. So from an IRS perspective, elected officials are classified as employees, so you are definitely given a W-2, it's paid as wages, there are some very minor exceptions to the law, nothing that applies here. So from that perspective, the Rayshar voters are elected officials, and they are employees. As it relates to compensation, what you have to be exempted from Fair Labor Standards Act, you would, there's provisions out there, both Connecticut and federal, that classify individuals as employees, exempt and non-exempt and non-employees. So the Rayshar submitted a package last week that discussed comparing their salaries and they're below what would be considered an exempt employee. And for those that don't know, exempt employee allows you to pay an annual salary and be excluded from tracking hours, paying overtime, and what have you. There's two tests that have to be met, one is a salary basis test, and then there's other tests for executive, for professional, and what have you. But the threshold question is, are you an employee under the Fair Labor Standards Act? In his, or in the report that was submitted to you, it was unclear whether the individual was claiming that they were covered by the act. They were saying they were using that, using the act as a way of showing what they believed to be reasonable compensation. I felt you should know that, under the act, they are not employees. So in that regard, elected officials are specifically exempted from Fair Labor Standards Act. So you're not obligated to use the act or to consider them exempt and non-exempt employees because for that purposes, they are not employees whatsoever, all right? They are specifically excluded from the act as being employees, so you're not obligated to pay them any set number before they can be classified as an exempt employee, okay? And we don't track their hours. From a perspective here, the town, there is no one that tracks the Rayshar voters, the town clerks' hours, right? We pay them a salary, and the salary is based off of work that's performed by the state statute, not based off of anything that's given to them by the town or tracked by hours. The other issue that was out there was the Affordable Care Act, whether they're entitled to health care benefits. There, it's not as clear. This is a fairly new act, and it says employees that work more than 30 hours are covered. Doesn't define employees, unlike the FLSA, which specifically exempts elected officials. The ACA doesn't do that. So there's been no test on that. What I would say is that it would probably fall under the non-employee status because the state statute gives the elected bodies, depending on whether you're a town or not in this case, town of Fairfield, Board of Selectmen sets the compensation. It doesn't rate it based off of hour or what have you, says you're an elected official, you have the right to give these elected officials whatever you determine to be reasonable compensation. So I've talked to other lawyers, I've looked at the blogs that are out there, and the reality is, while there's been no case law on this, most of us believe that elected officials would fall into the category of not included under the ACA by virtue of their being elected into the town. Otherwise, they could set their own hours, and they would be able to control whether they are or are not covered, right? Because there's 30-hour requirement under the Affordable Care Act for whether you're covered or not. Second part of that, even if they are employees, the reality is you don't have to cover 100% of your employees, you have to cover 95% of your employees. We have enough employees, or two employees that were added into that mix are not going to put this town in jeopardy of violating the ACA. So if you're not inclined to give them health care benefits as part of their reasonable compensation, I don't believe- believe even if they're found to be employees that you'd be in jeopardy of the ACA. So, those are the things that I thought that were important to address, that you should at least be aware of when determining what was reasonable compensation for the Regisaur voters.
So, if I can just kind of paraphrase back what I heard you say. One is that it is up to this board to set the compensation.
That's, by state statute, that is correct.
My concern in some of the backup that I'd read is that we might be in violation of certain Department of Labor laws or certain other regulations that come up. And you're saying that basically, these jobs fall outside those.
That's correct.
Right. So, that we're pretty much up to us to set what a reasonable compensation factor is.
Yes, sir.
I just, I wanted to make clear that the town wasn't in violation of anything or out of compliance with anything as we looked at this.
You are not in violation of any laws.
Okay. And then I'll open up my colleagues. Did you have any follow-up questions for Mr. Hibson?
He answered my follow-up question in your recap I had. So, I was going to ask whether the town would be at risk for potential, any potential fines for not following through the ACA, ASA, I'm sorry.
No, we don't have, we are, even two employees, we're over 200 employees
Right.
that are on our plan. So, you would fall, you'd still fall within 95% of town.
All right. Thank you. Emmett, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Now, it's up to us from a discussion standpoint. I don't know if we've heard any comments from the registrar on it. Would you like to?
I'd like to, yeah.
Okay. Would one of the registrars or both like to come up and offer some thoughts? Obviously, you prepared a lot of the backup in the first part. So, I wanted to make sure you have an opportunity to address your comments and thoughts.
Thank you. And actually, thank you, Mr. Hibson. It's actually really terrific to see someone who's a subject matter expert in a different subject than I'm an expert in speak. I spoke with each of the selectmen individually just to say, you know, these references were not a, you know, I guess, we weren't making a case for why you must pay us more. We were sort of making an advocacy case for why you should. So, that was the nature of those, you know, those recommendations to say, well, we have several different things sort of pointing all at the same salary range. So, we made a short presentation. If you'd like, we can read it to you and...
Is it okay with the board?
Yeah, sure.
Go right ahead.
Well, Selectmen Tetro, Tim Niack, and McArdle, thank you for taking up our, the subject of our salaries for the coming term. I'm joined here today by Steve Elworthy, formerly of your board and current deputy registrar. He'll be joining me as registrar in the current term. And Rogers has come up here as well. You have in your packets a proposal, along with documentation, on salary levels among similar large towns in Connecticut and among Fairfield Department managers. The substance of our proposal, and I should say, since Rogers is up here, this is a proposal Steve and I had discussed. Roger and I didn't, he hadn't signed off on this as a, as a concept. So, I should disclaim that. The substance is to adjust the registrar's salary to one-half the rate of the town clerk, to an annual rate of $48,000 per year. And in recognition of the time commitment and expanded duties required in election administration, to provide the registrars with benefits in line with those provided to department managers generally. I'm proud in the seven years that I've served as registrar that we've taken care to be thrifty in our management of town dollars. While the overall town budget has gone up by 20% since I began in 2009, the registrar's office has actually managed to decrease our budget by 2% overall in that time, finding efficiencies to offset state-manded expenses and rising staff and benefit costs at every opportunity. The main reason we've expanded these savings is the investment of uncompensated time by the registrars, by myself, and actually especially to my, by my counterpart, Mr. Otori, who's worked well beyond the 20 hours we've been listed as working throughout his tenure in office. Our duties require us, for an average of 30 hours each week, in truth, as any department head or elected official can tell you, we're always on duty, in office and out, working to deliver services and information to our constituents.
I have a second part here. So, in a sense, we are asking you to do, what we're asking you to do is to recognize that elections are, in fact, an essential town service with an appropriately staffed department supervised by professional managers. And I'm just going to throw in something here, that we are required now to be certified. And I'm actively working on that right now. It's, we have to take gate classes initially, and then we'll be taking some CE ongoing. And even if you accept our proposal, in total, the budget to run elections, a year-round office operation and a town-wide 150-person election operation, which includes all the poll workers, of course, would still be substantially less than it costs to run a single public classroom, school, public school classroom. That, Matt had actually gotten the numbers on that and calculated that it would be, I don't know that it's necessarily a perfect comparison, but just an idea to, or a point to compare it to. So, our hope is to work with you to implement these proposals over the course of the forthcoming term in a way that works with the town's budget plans and to use this discussion to find out how we may can better meet your expectations with respect to performance and accountability that you expect of any town department. And thank you.
Do you have a few words?
The only comments I would say, this is just my own thinking, if you're going to give them a raise, give it to them starting in the third and fourth year. They have two years to become certified. And this way, you're not going to be giving a lot of money to somebody who's either unable to be certified or doesn't want to be certified. That's my only thinking. That concept will also help you with getting the money in case you want to give them a raise, you know, and you pass it down. You don't have to deal with it this year or take it out of confidence to say or something like that. All right?
Roger, if you could, could you explain us a little bit about what certification means? It's, I understand they had to be certified, but you're saying they might not get certified.
They have two years. The way the law reads, you have two years to become certified.
And what's the penalty if you're not certified in two years?
That is sort of that nebulous little thing they haven't cooked up yet. Everybody should be, and I'm sure is, you know, depending on the Secretary of State, how she wants to push this thing, whether or not, you know, she wants to make an example of somebody who hasn't been certified. I mean, they're our elected person. I mean, they're elected as...
That was my thought process. Since they're elected officials, I was confused that...
But the law says you have to be certified. But it doesn't say anything, penalties if you don't become certified. It says you're required to take these classes. You're required to, town's required to pay for them or whatever. But there's nothing to say if you don't.
There's no penalty if you don't. That's...
Nothing specified.
Actually, the law permits the secretary to remove uncertified registrars at her discretion. They're not required to be, but that's a power she adopted with this new legislation.
Okay. That seems to make more sense. There's some sort of penalty or kicker, if you will, on top of that. Otherwise, it's, it seems like a pretty much toothless regulation in terms of what takes place.
And I'm required to be certified by the end of this fiscal year because I'm already a registrar. So, Steve has two years, but I'll get it done way before that.
I didn't, my comments didn't mean to suggest that either of you would not be certified. I was just curious as to the process and mechanism and kind of what regulations there are over the registrars. Because as we've kind of found in the past, registrars are really entities unto yourselves and that you don't really report to anybody. There's nobody that actually manages you from that standpoint.
Right. Well, and one thing that Mr. Otori said that I think, you know, is in line with my thinking as well, is to say, you know, as we talk about what the salary level should be and what the benefit level should be, talking about implementing changes at a time when they can be put into the budget appropriately and not make an enormous dent, I actually think that's perfectly reasonable as an approach. And one of the things that I'm very interested in, because as you say, registrars, you know, we are not reportable to you in the sense that you can choose to let us go, right? The voters have a shot at us every few years. But, you know, it's, we don't report to the chain of command in the town in the way that a lot of department heads do. But we do work in the same way that the town clerk does, right? Which is also elected and sort of a full department manager in the sense of, you know, salary and benefits. So, one of the things I think that we're interested in seeing is, you know, how do you manage these other departments? And what can we do as a part of this discussion about, in a way, mainstreaming our office within the town hall community to meet your expectations for performance, right? To say, well, are you doing what we expect? Are you meeting the public's needs in the way that we want? So, I think that making that a part of that same discussion would be actually really valuable. I know that Stratford, who actually recently had a similar professionalization program approved by their town council, basically did both sides where they said, here's what we expect to change. And here's the staffing level we're going to provide to implement those changes. So, I think that's a totally appropriate way of looking at it. And so, if you have expectations for how we should report to the town, what information you want from us about what's happening in the office and in elections, I think this is actually a really terrific opportunity to figure out a plan together.
Yes, mine. I don't care if I continue on that discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wasn't sure how to bring this up, but since you brought it up, the issue is not that you don't report to the first selectman or somebody in the town chain of command. It's the issue that registrars literally don't report to anybody at the state level or anything else. So, when it comes down to, as you talk, as you mentioned, performance, I think there were a number of issues that came up over the last few years that certainly raised cause for concern. We actually put together a committee to investigate and review what happened in recent elections because there were so many complaints that came up. So, from a standpoint of quality and responsiveness, there certainly have been questions asked by this board, as well as by the RTM and other boards, that have not been necessarily responsibly answered in a, again, timely basis. So, I think that from a performance level standpoint, certainly, that's an issue. I think with respect to the compensation, I don't know, it's, at least, we haven't discussed anything that said this is necessarily performance-based. It's more about the position. So, I'm not sure we need to get into all of that. But certainly, there were issues in the past few years that raised questions about the quality of service that our town and voters are getting and responsiveness to the elected officials and their questions in this. So, but I will turn all any questions to my colleagues at this point.
Go ahead.
Look, I'm someone who follows this pretty closely. And I've been looking at it. There's no question right now, the registrar voter's office is changing statewide. You know, more and more mandates are coming down. And, you know, I look at the state of Connecticut as confused about what they want to go, or the direction they want to go in. And then getting that direction relayed back to the registrar voters is becoming more and more time-consuming to do that. And then, it comes, well, it comes back down on the town side for implementation. You need to get the volunteers in place. You need to get the staffing. And then, you know, as election laws change, we've got to be fluid in that, too. So, there's no question in my mind, there's a higher burden placed upon the registrar voters today than there was, you know, 10 years ago. But, the flip side of the coin is, technology has also changed, which should be making the job, I believe, easier to do, to both of those in there. Roger, you mentioned something about the certification and postponing two years. Is there, is there, do we have to set this for a four-year period today?
Okay, just for the record, we don't have to set it today.
Right.
It would take effect January 3, 2017, approximately. And it would be in place for four years. So, we can set one rate for four years, four different rates, a rate for two years, and a rate for another two years. We have flexibility in how we do that.
Okay. Yeah, no, that was what I was wondering.
All right. So, and then that goes, yeah, go ahead, Roger.
The last raise we got when the Board of Finance was doing this, they decreed that first two years, we would get no raise. And the third year, we would get a raise of a certain percentage. And that was good for the third year and the fourth year. And it's currently what we're on now, that rate. So, that's, that's another way of doing it. That's why I suggested if it takes two years, because it's not just these two gentlemen that are going to be in this job. And maybe other people long, you know, and you're supposed to have sort of a system that's consistent from year to year, or, you know, terms, I suggested. That's why I suggested that the raise would take effect that, after the second year. So, it'd be the third and the fourth year.
If I might clarify what Roger just said, what the Board of Finance did in the last iteration of this, was if you look at all four years, they gave a zero, first year, zero second year, 3% third year, zero fourth year.
Okay.
Okay. So, once it jumped 3%, then it stayed the same for the next year.
Right.
Now, the other thing that has happened is we discovered that stipend.
Right.
And again, it's not quite clear when that started or how it got in, but it got in. And I certainly wasn't aware of that. And not quite sure how many years that goes back. But we removed that during our budget process.
Right.
And that was a $1,500 reduction. So, if nothing changes, the registrars would be currently earning $1,500 less than what they did. And I know we had some discussion about how we wanted to handle that, but we didn't finish that during the budget process because we knew we'd be coming back to visit it here.
The correct amount was 25.
25.
Yeah. It was 5,000. And it was, you split it in half, it's 2,500.
So, as far as I'm concerned, there's no question that I want to definitely put the stipend back into the salary. I mean, take the stipend we took out to roll that back into the salary. I hate to do this, but I'm leaning towards the idea of postponing this for two more weeks so I can have a follow-up conversation with our finance director about rolling out a schedule or trying to put together a schedule of what, you know, modest increase would look like. And so, I don't have to talk it out or hash it out. And I can actually look at something concrete. Now that I got information from Mr. Hibson today and you guys gave your report, I don't know if the board would be willing to sit on this for another two weeks, or we could try to put together some sort of schedule.
I don't see any time deadlines. Gentlemen, there's no time deadline in doing that?
You have to do it before the smearing out of the terms. So, that would be January.
I think the idea is to do it certainly well before October. So, that's, the end of October. So, that's not a problem.
No, it makes sense to me.
So, I'm okay to, I think our job is to make the right decision, not necessarily make the wrong decision.
Right. And we want to be thoughtful about it and take all this into consideration.
So, is that a motion, Mr. Timniak?
It will be. I just want you guys to know that I'm definitely comfortable putting the stipend back in. So, you don't, I don't know what you think about it. I'm thinking about the next level of this. So...
Appreciate that.
And I'd rather not have a brainstorming session right now as we just draw out numbers. So, that's my opinion. I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Postponed with a date certain?
Postponed at a date certain.
The next Board of Selectment meeting in September? Or do you want to go to the first one in October?
I would say the next one in September.
Okay.
What's the date of that?
September 17. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
21st, you mean? You can do Wednesday.
Sorry, yeah. It's, is it 21st?
Yeah, today's 7th.
Yep, sorry.
No, no problem.
7/25. Thank you, Mr. Elworthy.
Thank Mr. El.
Calendar's an important app. Any further discussion on a motion postponed to a date certain? Any comments from the public on a motion to postpone to a date certain?
May I make a comment?
If it's relating to the motion to postpone and the motion to postpone only, please.
It is. And just in that time for a postponement, you know, I do take seriously this idea that you feel like you may not have gotten enough information about the different things that we do in the office and how we have responded to and corrected problems. So, you know, apart from discussing sort of salary questions, I think it would be terrific to also say, what would you expect to change?
Yep, Mr. Wright, about the motion to postpone and the motion to postpone only. Very smooth, but not directly on topic.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further comments of the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Gentlemen, thank you. See you in two weeks. All right. The next item up, we have a private executive session. The next item up, we have a private executive session with the board, so I would ask everyone to leave except for our attorney guests. All right, we may have a motion to bring us back into public session.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're back in public session. In private executive session, no motions were made, and no votes were taken. Back in public, any further discussion?
Nope.
We have a motion to accept the recommendation of Attorney Aiken.
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a motion to accept the recommendation of Attorney Lottie.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. That settles that business. Next item up is the tax collector to consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount recommended. May I have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
A second? All right, that item stands before us. Any amendments?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to change the amount to $26,261.63, followed by a period.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
The item as amended stands before us. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the amendment's approved. So the item as amended now stands before us. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor of the item?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. That's it. To consider, here, consider and act upon any other business which will promptly come before this meeting. Any other business?
Nope.
No.
All right. Moving on then, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?